Twenty twenty-five at six P M. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely by using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight we're going to have a moment of silence and what you can think about during this moment of silence is I was a past high school principal and let me tell you this is the most strenuous time of the year, making sure all the students, especially the graduating seniors, are safe. So you can think about their safety during this time. So would join me for a moment of silence, please. And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley. Council Martell.
President.
Council Hitchcock.
President.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Anne Hanselman has an excused absence. Council Stackpole.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink. Also present with me are Assistant City Manager Michelle LeBrie and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May, let me make sure I got the right one, the regular city council meeting held on May sixth, twenty twenty-five? Pete? A second, please. Jonathan? Thank you. All those? Thank you. Was this the one Nate, you had a correction?
I did, yes.
Was, did you already give that to Larissa?
I did.
Okay, we're all set. And then the minutes from the executive session on city council held May sixth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion, Pete?
Yeah, a motion.
A second, Jonathan?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. And now for the mayor's report, and I have two different reports tonight. This afternoon, I was able to attend Sanford School Steering Committee to update the Sanford Schools Department mission, vision, core principles, beliefs about learning, and portrait of a graduate. Amid a shifting landscape, education stands as both a foundation and a beacon for our collective future. As we navigate changes driven by automation, artificial intelligence, and shift, the shifting workforce demands, the traditional model of education with emphasis on standardized assessment and isolated academic achievement no longer suffices. The future will demand durable skills like critical thinking, resiliency, adaptation, and collaboration. It will require students to approach complex challenges, critical thinking, social intelligence, and innovation. The fast-paced nature of artificial intelligence creates a need for a level of adaptive, adaptivity not seen for any generation in our history. Schools must now prepare students not just for college or a single career, but for a world where they may need to pivot multiple times and continuously learn new skills throughout their lives. We are entering a very challenging time for our schools and the future of our children. So I don't know if you know this, but you can actually have a meeting and have your computer listen to it, and it will type up the minutes for you. It will even put it in a letter format if that's what you want. You no longer have to hardly do anything. So I used to be the principal of Sanford Junior High about twelve years ago, or fifteen, time passes. And I remember coming before the school committee and stating we wanted all these laptops, which, by the way, Apple practically gave them to us at that point, for all eight hundred students in my building. And I remember the school committee looking at me going, what are you thinking? Why would we want our kids on computers during the day, the school day? And I remember responding to them saying, you won't even be able to fix your car in the future without a computer. And sure enough, see this little thing? This is a full computer. Not only can I do the, my phone, which is kind of what I can only do, but it can play music, it can have letters in it, it can, it can record anything we're doing. I mean, it is amazing. You can do your emails, you can, I can send you a message from my phone. It is amazing in the last fifteen years what has happened in ours. Can you imagine what's going to happen in the next fifteen years? It is just so exciting. So it was really nice working with the, the school department. At this meeting, we had a lot of biz people representing all the businesses in the area and helping to us to look ahead for the future of our kids. So they were so excited, the businesses were so excited to hear that the schools were looking to the future. And so it was, it was just a great meeting. Now to something that isn't as positive, and this is about all the shelters and everything that are happening in our community. On Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Representative Anne Marie Mistracchio and Michelle Meyer called a meeting with state legislative, York County Commissioners, the Homeless Task Force, community outreach programs about the York County Shelter Program. Anne Hanselman is a part of that committee, and I'm a part of that, and Steve is a part of that committee, so we were, were present. Were, any of the rest of you, did you attend that meeting? And Maura, you were on that meeting? Okay. So I'm going to let you know the, the current status of these programs. The emergency adult shelter on Shaker Hill Campus in Alfred suspended operations May ninth. At that time, each of the thirty-seven clients had a plan in place for housing. Eleven clients were able to find housing through Y C P C, a court, affordable housing program. Some of the plans of others offered only temporary solutions. Clients were provided with contact information for additional resources. Then we have the family shelter will continue to operate until alternate housing is confirmed for about sixteen residents or until another organization can take over the operation. And that facility, along with several of our others, has children involved. With support of the main housing, an affordable housing program will continue. Y C S P owns and manages twenty-four separate properties with a hundred and seventeen apartment units throughout York County. These operations require to be administrators, the housing program continues to be in place. And a lot of those places are paid for by the clients who are in there, but it's at a tremendously reduced rate. The food service program suspended operations effective yesterday, which was last Monday, during the Community Meals Program that delivers homemade meals each week, and the Shaker Hill Campus Food Services and Bakery. The food pantry located at the former sheriff's building in Alfred will continue for now thanks to a generous allocation of funding by the York County Commissioners. The commissioners will consider long-term support as a part of the current budget process. Layman's Way Recovery Center, a seventeen-bed treatment facility, will continue operation until June thirtieth. The long-scheduled closing date in coordination with the building of the county's new recovery center. Books Revisited, a gentle-used bookstore located in Sanford is operated by dedicated volunteers and will continue its operations at this time. The following discussions took place. And we were very lucky to have as many senators and representatives, so that the state is hearing us. The issue of the most immediate concern is the family shelter. The cost operating of the family shelter is approximately seventeen thousand per month. Obtaining short good funding will allow it to continue in operation while a long-term solution is found. Many on the call, we believe, we can find funding if we have a commitment from the organization to operate the family shelter on an interim basis. We are working to identify an organization to play this role. And that essentially means that if we have funding, there are several organizations who are willing to run that program as long as we can find a funding source. And it's almost like a cycle. If you find somebody to run them, then you will, other organizations are willing to send funds. So it's like, whose wag is the dog or the tail or however that thing goes? The homeless, homeless response system in York County was, has relied on adult emergency shelter for many services. We need to adjust the system to current, excuse me, to current, let me go on. The G A will play a role in, in this. We also need to think about the winter and the need for warming center. The adult shelter is a vital resource and a hard business to run. Several people suggested that municipalities must play a role in funding this. The community must come together, decide the best way to make sure this resource comes available again. So that's the shelter that's in Alfred. And if we can find the funding for that, we are allowed to stay in that building for a year. Right now, we have nobody there, but we have up to a year to refund that building, and then we can start sending people there again. The next steps, the next steps this committee has decided are confirming funding and operational needs for the family shelter. That's the major, the major issue. Identify an organization to operate the family shelter on an interim basis and a longer-term basis. Identify funding to support the family shelter, as you can see, the family shelter is our major concern. Explore the possibility of re-establishing the adult emergency shelter in the long term. A group of agencies have come together to partner with the shelter during this period. They will continue to pay attention to these issues on a day-to-day basis. Let me explain one of the suggestions that was made. When we talk about communities helping, Sanford, here you go, Sanford has about twenty-three thousand people here. A suggestion was going to be that out of our funds, we donate two dollars per person, which would be forty-six thousand dollars a year. If all of York County, all of the communities in York County did that, it'd be over five-hundred thousand dollars, and we could keep all those shelters up and opening. So we're hoping that all of York County will feel this is very important because we all send people to these facilities. So hopefully, that could be one part, and then other businesses and organizations would be willing to donate money because of all of York County being willing to do something about this situation. So we will get back to you as soon as we know more. We are closely paying attention to all this. Now, subcommittee reports. Maura, did you have some subcommittee reports?
God, I don't, now I'm not remembering what was on property subcommittee. Sorry. I forgot that we had reports this week. Let me take a quick peek. Can you start with someone else?
Yeah, I can. We'll start with Bob.
Okay.
Yes, solid waste did meet last Tuesday. And the, the good news is that at, at, I think if you, if you hearken back, remember we had talked about the solid waste portion of our, of our system that was out for a contract renewal? And so we had received, I think I mentioned, three proposals at that time. They were opened a couple of weeks ago and discussed and then brought to the, the committee. Now, this is for solid waste. There's two parts to all this. There's recyclables and solid waste. And so the, the solid waste, we looked at the vendors, we looked at all their offerings on the, the programs, and we decided to actually stay with, and I don't believe this has actually been approved by the council yet, but we decided to stay with Casella, who is our current operator, and.
It's going to be brought forward at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Will be, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah. This will all be approved by the council. You'll, you'll get all the background information that you need at that meeting. So, and, and this was because of the costs associated with some of the other programs. This was the most moderately priced part of the program, and then there is a commitment on behalf of the vendor to work with us to make that program more modernized. For instance, I think I can say with some confidence that we will be going in future years. Might take a couple of years for us to get there, maybe longer. We'll be going with receptacles that are put on the streets like a lot, you see in a lot of other communities. The reason why I can say this with some confidence is because all the vendors literally are going with the container pickup because it's too dangerous to operate that person on the back of the truck, and so they're eliminating that. Casella hasn't completely eliminated that yet, but they have said they will be eliminating that in the future, which will essentially force us to go with the containers. But there is a good process for getting us there, which, which everyone will know. So it, it, it looks like we've, we've got some good options going into the future. It was brought up before that we're also now a, a community owner in EcoMaine, and they will be handling all of our solid waste and recyclables and taking care of that for us, and that's a thirty-year contract. So we'll be able to work with them and certainly, number one, we, we have a place that's guaranteed for the next thirty years where we can bring our solid waste and recyclables to dispose of, which is becoming an issue certainly statewide, if not in New England. And so we've, we've covered that base or will be covering that base. And then we'll be moving to an economical way to modernize the solid waste and recyclable pickups through containers that we'll have going into the future. So there's some, there's some major changes that are going to take place, and I can't get into too many details. At this point, I'm not really sure what's public and what isn't public, but these are some of the things that were discussed at the meeting. So I'm very optimistic that we're going to have a favorable contract situation for the community that's going to be lasting. I mean, the Casella contract would likely be five years anyways, if not more, and again, EcoMaine is thirty years. And it's, it's going to put us in, in good shape for the future. So if you can be optimistic about solid waste and recyclables, I'm optimistic.
Thank you very much. Maura, you all ready?
Yeah. So everything's on the agenda tonight, except for the fact that we got a, there's going to be an update. Obviously, Allison's been working on an update of the airport master plan and layout, which is a good thing because the expansion at the airport has been extensive. We've seen a lot of people putting in new hangars. We're talking about one of them this evening, and the payback that we get from the infrastructure improvement that the city approved through bond issues. So those are all great things. But we'll be seeing her update in the master layout in the near future. And the other thing is I covered for Nate at Land Bank. So one, we have, we do have land on the market, and we've been getting some offers. So, you know, and people should understand that with the Land Bank, when we have situations, any monies that we earn from sales of properties that we do own, we don't own all the ones we take down, but the ones that we do own, we're able to sell and put back in to recover costs. So there was one great success story coming forward of that happening, where we took down a property, and we've sold the land, and we should be able to recover the majority of our cost. Also, I was able to attend the groundbreaking with Steve Buck and our new marketing director, Megan Bowe there. We went to Beaver Hill Road. There will be, it's a great success story there. I remember when someone was trying to put multifamilies there, the neighborhood wasn't too happy, it's an awkward parcel, but there will be four new Habitat for Humanity homes there. And we were able to meet three of the families. And it was funny, there was an older couple with a son and a younger couple with a son. One was in high school, one was not in school yet, and older, the older, the couple with the older son said, oh, he's such a cutie. And I looked at them and I said, and you're going to get to see him grow up. So it's, it's going to be nice. They're already getting to meet each other, and two of the homes should arrive on May twenty-eighth. They're modulars. Such, you should see a lot of activity on Beaver Hill Road. We should, we are discussing tonight Eight York Street, so I don't need to say much more. I'll let Michelle update us when we get to that item. And we discussed other properties on our radar. So we will be seeing another property soon for a dangerous building assessment.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other subcommittees that have reports? All right, good. Let's move right along. Communications and presentations, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Small.
My name is Eric Small, I'm a police chief, and tonight we're here to do a promotion. Detail, post. It is with great pride that we recognize Officer Brett Tisham on his well-earned promotion to the rank of sergeant with the Sanford Police Department. Brett began his career in law enforcement in twenty fourteen with the Wells Police Department, where he served with professionalism and dedication. In twenty twenty-two, we were fortunate to welcome him to the Sanford Police Department, where he quickly became a valued member of our team. Brett has consistently demonstrated strong leadership, a commitment to community policing, and the integrity we expect of our supervisory staff. As he steps into this new role, we are confident that he will continue to serve the citizens of Sanford with honor and distinction. Tonight, we will pin Officer Tisham's collar brass and police badge. The collar brass represents an officer's rank and authority within the police department. Pinning Brett's collar brass tonight is Major Mark Dyer and Chad Allen. The police badge represents a dedicate, a dedication to upholding the law and protecting the community. It's a symbol of public trust and a promise to serve and protect. It is worn proudly by our officers as a visual representation of this promise. Pinning Brett's badge is Deputy Chief Matthew Gagné. Tonight, we present Brett with a certificate. This certificate proudly presented to Brett Tisham is recognition of his exemplary performance and a wavering dedication of professional excellence. Through consistent hard work and commitment to the highest standards, Brett has demonstrated the quality of a true leader. It is great pride that we acknowledge tonight his promotion and look forward to his continued contributions and success in this role. Please join me in congratulating Sergeant Brett Tisham. Madam Mayor, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. He knows what's happening, I can tell. Could we first have a, for the three office majors, could you have a picture of you guys along with the chief and Brett? And then we'll do the next step? Because we don't usually get a picture of all, all of you guys.
Family's been desperately trying to get photos.
I know.
So, you know, you might have to help them with that effort.
So you guys want to turn, you have a camera? Yes.
Technology.
I know, isn't that amazing?
He doesn't know how to use it because all of a sudden I was showing up on his phone.
And.
How's my hair? Is it good?
It looks perfect. It always looks perfect. Oh, two majors and the deputy chief, sure, get it straight here. Now, can we have the family up, pleased with Brett? Now, all you guys, you must be related somehow if you're sitting there. And could you tell us who these people are?
His wife Jamie used to be a dispatcher for us in the past. He can be in my category.
Uh huh. And the people behind you are?
Those are my in-laws.
In-laws? Excellent.
Mom and.
Fantastic. Now, if you guys could get together, and the people in the back, we kind of need to get you to poke through so they can see you. Excellent. Thank you, guys. Thanks for bearing with me.
Thank you. Congratulations, Brett.
That's excellent. You know, the promotions are one of my favorite things that we do at this meeting, and I love to embarrass people by calling their whole family up. Excellent. There's no public participation, is that correct, Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now on to public hearings. And if any of you guys want to leave, now is the perfect time because the rest of the meeting can be boring, but you're more than welcome to stay.
Have you complicated a bunch of moves?
All right. The next part, the city council will take public comments on the following. A public hearing to receive comments to decide whether or not to discontinue pursuant to the provisions in twenty-three M R S A section thirty twenty-six dash A, portion of the public way known as the old airport road, more fully described, in order to discontinuance on file with the Sanford City Clerk at nine nineteen Main Street Sanford and determine what damages, if any, should be paid to property owners abutting such way if it is discontinued. And Michelle, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, so in your packets, there is all of your background information, and there's also a map that identifies the small parcel of land that is being discussed. So this land was given back to the town back in the nineteen thirties by the state when they built their new Route one oh nine. So we have a request from the property abutter to purchase that small piece of land. It's approximately a quarter of an acre. So there is a pre-existing subdivision encroaching on the property, and it's not being used by the city. So in order to follow Title twenty-three, we would like to discontinue the public way, and this is part of the formal process. And then, once we go through the process of discontinuing the piece of land, we can then sell it to the abutter.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. The next public hearing, for the purpose of receiving public comments on the proposed credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sanford and J and J Whitney Properties L L C relating to the development of lots or parcels of land on the adjacent to Presidential Lane at the airport and Denfry as Hangar W sixty-two located within the Sanford Airport Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. Allison, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Navia, I'm the manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. This is, if you'll remember, back to the Presidential Lane development that we did. That was an infrastructure and economic incentive program where we put in kind of like a subdivision, the road, all the utilities, stubbed them all off, and that's within the Tax Increment Financing District that's tied to the solar project, so that we can offer the incentive of paying them back for their infrastructure fee that they contribute to help us cash flow the building of the road. So this is the, I believe, the fourth one that we've done, so that subdivision is working really well, they're filling in over there. And this one's fairly straightforward because it's just that infrastructure fee that we return back to them. return back to them. The way that it works and what the agreement says is every year, he pays his property taxes. As soon as we receive his check, we cut him a check for 100% of the amount right back to him until we've paid him back in full the $47,861 that it cost to tie in. It's a great benefit for the developers, and it's really worked well to try to attract development because you could never build that road and run all the utilities over there for $47,000. And you get to just tie right in. And then you get paid back over a period of time. So that seems to be working really well as an economic incentive. And like I said, this is the fourth one. We'll have two more of these coming this year with other developments that are going on. So we're adding about, about $2.2 million of new valuation to the airport this year with the amount of hangars and development that are just in progress right now. So this is one of them. Step one, to get you back familiar with the process. And then, um, we'll have some that are a little bit more complicated coming forward because it's not just the infrastructure fee. The other developments will be adding taxiway and doing a few other things, sort of like what the Lifelight Building did, that benefits people further on down the line. And that's also eligible in the TIFF District to get reimbursed to them. So those will be a little more complicated, not to get ahead of ourselves. This one is nice and simple, just to get us back in the swing of it again. So a public hearing's required. There's only one. We don't have to read it twice. And then the acceptance is in your agenda later on under new items.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Hearing none, I close this hearing. The next, thank you, Allison. The next is a public hearing to solicit comments on the U.S. Brownfields Cleanup Grant for the Abatement and Demolition of IWM Boiler House and stabilizing, stabilization of the Pioneer Avenue Retaining Wall. This is a required hearing as part of the U.S. EPA Brownfields Cleanup Program. And Keith, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you very much.
Not that you're boring. Even though I said the rest of the meeting could be boring.
I thought that was directed at me specifically.
It will, I, well, I, you know, I saw, I was looking right at you. And so I thought I needed to correct that.
All right. No, no. It hurt my pride a little bit, but I'll get over it.
Okay.
So I think as the council's aware, we've talked about it. We've loudly celebrated it. We received a $5 million cleanup grant from the EPA, um, in 2024. The grant is for specifically this project, the demolition removal and cleanup at the International Woolen Mill Boiler House. So this is the first meeting of many that we're going to have that are regularly scheduled to discuss this project as it moves forward. However, that plan to demolish this building, to clean up the site, has been discussed at the council level before. This is not something that is, that is brand new to the community being discussed publicly, specifically when the building was given a hazardous and dangerous building declaration back in 2022. And in 2023, when the, uh, city took the building and that property through eminent domain. And the city also paid for the removal of the stack, the remaining stack that was on the building. The other stack had already fallen down long before. So our grant application includes a commitment to have regular public presentations and discussions to answer any questions that the council or the community may have, to get any feedback. And as I mentioned, this will be the first quarter of the meeting of, of many to come as this project continues to move forward. We are joined tonight by, uh, Charles Springer and Emily Wassmer from TRC. TRC is the city's qualified environmental professional firm. And in that capacity, they're handling a lot of the technical details of this work. So tonight, they're here to give an overview and of the project and of the cleanup and the timeline of activities going forward so that the community can understand what to expect to see happening over there and when and how all that is going to go forward. So I will, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And I know that the boring comment was directed at me, not Keith. So we'll try to keep this brief, but this is a required piece of the federal grant that Sanford received. So as Keith said, I'm Charlie Springer from TRC. Emily Wassmer from TRC is here as well to help answer any questions that there may be. We're dealing with federal EPA dollars, so there is a public process, right? There are things that are required by the federal government and EPA. And that's what we're here to do, to be able to answer these questions if there might be. And there will be multiple opportunities as we go through this process. Tonight, specifically, what we are here to talk about is a document that's called An Analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives. And this is currently a draft document because we are in the public comment period. Once we are done that 30-day public comment period, it will become final. Once we, if there are any comments, and we update and EPA, DEP review and approve. I should pause and say, I know that at least Dory Parr from EPA is online. Um, I'm not sure if Dave Chapman from Maine DEP is online. He didn't know if he could make it or not. Okay, so maybe not Dave's here, but we certainly have Dory Parr online as well from, from EPA to, uh, to listen in and to make sure I do this right. But with that, again, this is a required process. Analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives. We lovingly refer to it as an ABCA. It's alphabet soup. Um, you know, you all, it all, the terminology doesn't matter. But it, basically, this is a document that runs through the different options and what makes the most sense. It's an engineering evaluation. It's a cost evaluation. In writing the grant to get the $5 million to take down the Boiler House and abate the hazardous building materials and the material that, and the contaminated material in the soil, this was the document that we first drafted to make sure that you needed the money. So now we are here in the public process to finalize that document so we can go execute the work. Next slide, please. Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. So what are we actually going to do? Here's the cleanup approach. Uh, the preferred alternative, both from a technical practability standpoint, but also a cost standpoint, was to abate the hazardous building materials, lead, asbestos, low-level PCBs, some minor petroleum, while we demolished the building. It's actually cheaper because we can send it all out as, in one waste stream than trying to segregate everything and clean every brick and do all that wildly labor-intensive, costs more money. So the side benefit of that, as we're doing that remediation, the building can come down. We'll also remove the tank vault. Many of you probably have seen that concrete structure that sits kind of behind where Aerofab used to be. Um, if you go all the way back, when they took Aerofab down, when we took Aerofab down, it was actually deemed too complicated at the time, so they left that for future, uh, work to be done. Well, guess what? We're finally here. Sanford finally received the grant to go do it, and we're going to finish that job. Um, there is some soil issues going on, particularly probably underneath that tank vault and in a couple other places. We'll take care of that soil when we do this. At the end, from our standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, we're going to install what's called a cap cover system. This is a human exposure barrier. And it's basically going to, there's going to be some low-level material left in the ground, just as there is at Aerofab, just as there is at Sanford Mill. But we're going to cap it so no one can get to it. And that cap is going to look an awful lot like an asphalt parking lot. And that way, we will be able to expand that lot in space and have more parking to hopefully facilitate additional redevelopment in the mill yard. So it's a win-win. Um, there will be a D restriction and what's called an environmental media management plant. Honestly, there's, this already exists today. Um, it will be amended to the, the future, um, completion of, of the cap cover system in that parking lot. One of the things that Sanford was very wise to include in their grant application to EPA was the stabilization of Pioneer Avenue. We believe that the Boiler House itself is acting, to some degree, perhaps not a major degree, but to some degree as a buttress, holding up Pioneer Ave. We don't want Pioneer Avenue to fall over. So with that, we're doing a structural evaluation and working on that. And the stabilization of that wall will be part of this project to make sure that the utilities and the public and, and the ability to continue to transport, you know, to, to use vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic on Pioneer Ave. So that is the plan. The timeline, because that's what everybody really wants to know, is when are you going to get it done? So currently, we are getting the geotechnical and structural evaluation of the retaining wall underway. We will do that analysis over this, this construction season, this summer, and the analysis into the fall. We are also moving forward with all the programmatic documents that are required. Again, the analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives, you see it here on the screen. That's what we're here talking about tonight. There are a number of other things that we need to do to comply with the federal process. We anticipate this fall and winter going out to bid to hire a remediation contractor, which will also be a demo contractor. That work, hopefully, will, you know, will be selections in late winter, spring. And we're talking about a 2026 construction project. And hopefully, by the time the snow flies in the winter of '26, there's a little more parking lot for public work staff to plow. So, and I think with that, uh, oh, for more information, this is important. So part of the public engagement process, Sanford Connects, working with Keith, um, we have created a new page on Sanford Connects that is going to house all the documents, the information. There'll be, um, as new things become available, status updates, photos, all that will be posted here. And then, as Keith already said, you know, we'll be doing quarterly updates to you all and allow the public to participate. With that, I'll pause for questions.
Okay. Um, under this part, we will, you're coming up again. Are they on the thing later?
No.
No. So we're going to have to ask the questions now. Normally, this is for our public, not for the council. So, but I'm going to ask them if they have any questions because this might. You are the public, too. So why don't you, if you have any, I think, you've got your hand up? Okay, Bob?
So, uh, I guess I'm, I'm going to ask, uh, just dropped my glasses here.
Right there. Oh, wrong pair. So you can tell when you're getting old, you have to have two pairs of glasses.
See far away and close up. So the difficult question, um, and they're called rats. And since we're taking down a mill building, and I think this is in the public's interest, is there any remediation for rats that might be in that building? Or how do they get, will they get dispersed out into the community? What, uh, help me out?
No, it's, it's a fair comment. It's something that is not addressed specifically in the analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives, but, um, understanding that's a concern, this is the whole point of public comment, right? Now's the time. Uh, we can, uh, look to find a solution for, you know, what might be in the building to trap prior to demolition so that they don't just have to find another home. That's something that we can add in.
I think that would be great. I mean, that's just me talking, but I think the community would appreciate that.
And we can, I mean, we can make every effort to try to.
Yeah, I know it's not going to be 100%.
Right.
There were a lot in the mill that burned. I think that's what Bob and I are remembering. There were a lot that raced out of the mill that burned.
Yeah, and, well.
It's a fair, it's a fair comment, and this is why we're having this. It's a great.
Yeah, I think anything that could be done to remediate that situation and behalf of the community would be, would be great.
Sounds good.
Pete?
Yeah, just a little history on Aerofab. This council's mom used to work there. So I thought that was pretty cool. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Jonathan?
I'll follow up with that. My dad actually worked there for a while. And I got to fly in one of the planes as a kid. They used to do, uh, free runs. So anyway, side, side topic, but thank you for all your hard work with us and, um, definitely looking forward to having some progress with this building. So thank you.
And I have no relatives who ever worked there. Any other questions?
Did you act, did you happen to say, have you, have you been able to do an assessment on the wall that holds up Pioneer? Or is it?
It's occurring now. So we did a, we did some preliminary work in the past. And actually, um, DPW also has done a little bit of stuff in the past. We have that information. But this is, to remove that structure is a bit more invasive, shall we say? So we really want to get this right. So, uh, we're in the process of going through that, you know? And again, this was built into the $5 million cost, but it's, it's a couple hundred grand to do this work. I mean, it's not cheap.
And, you know, I would note that it's not surprising that that would have happened at the time because most likely, the people building the mill yard were also building the infrastructure to the mill yard. And it wouldn't surprise me if they use the wall to do two functions.
I mean, I've been in there many times. I'm a geologist, not a structural engineer, but like, the wall just continues, right? Like, it always, it just looks the same as it does. Someone's like, hey, I don't have to build a third wall if I put a boiler house here, you know? Like, and they just shoved it up against. But now, the way things have settled, it, you know, we're concerned that it might be carrying some of the load. So we just, again, we want to do this right.
I think the people who live on that street would really appreciate you doing it right.
Again, we're very lucky that when the first stack fell down, it didn't kill anybody. So, you know, that fell across the street into, into the lot. So let's.
That was a good one. I remember that.
No, it wasn't a good one.
Well, it was, it was interesting. I know who took the stacks down, and every day I'd look out and you could barely really see him up there, just like, was he crazy to want to do that job? Because it was, it was quite a project to take the second one down. Um, one more question. So we've talked at various times through my time on the council about a potential, in the way, future, um, parking garage in this general location. So putting the cap on as we're going to do, does that, um, prevent us from doing that in the future? Or would it be just a further cleanup before we could do that in the future?
Uh, option C. But to answer question A, no, it does not prevent you in any way, shape, or form.
Yep.
From doing structured parking in the future.
Okay.
Uh, this grant can't pay for that because it's not a cap, right? You know, and we've talked about that.
And this is the most important part, getting this to be safe.
Right. Getting, well, getting it down, expanding the parking lot. Um, there, to do structured parking in that spot, what you're really doing is digging deeper into the ground to set your footings to be able to carry that new structure up. So the, uh, we already know the material down there isn't clean. So there, there's going to be some material management when you do that. There'll be some cost associated with that. But it will pale in comparison to the $5 million that we're talking about to get the building down. You can rip through the asphalt parking lot to build structured parking. You will have to do that in coordination with Maine DEP. That's the Environmental Covenant, the D District. But they can then change your covenant to allow these types of uses. And we will try to, you know, create the environmental media management plant. Again, all these EMP, all this alphabet soup, you know, that will allow for work in the subsurface that will lay out the procedures that a contractor would need to do to actually, you know, execute that work, to put those footings in. I'm very hopeful that Sanford is able to do structured parking at some point in the future. I know that would likely be other grants that would need it, you know, needed to construct that. But man, I mean, just personally, to think about having an entrance coming off Pioneer as well as, you know, coming up off, you know, Heritage Crossing would be, would be really cool.
Right. So in the, in the final question I have, because this is like, I'm trying to get this out into the public as well. I probably know the answer to this. But, so I remember when the Vichy building came down. It came down because it was basically trapping stuff in the building that had to be remediated. And it wasn't, it was kind of a toxic building because of what they had pushed into the ground that was now coming up through the air. So in this particular instance, I'm assuming that enclosed structure where you're breathing, other than a parking garage, where you're breathing in whatever perforations, is going to be a no-no unless you fully clean what is down there.
Well, you're correct, and you're correct in what you're saying, that we do not intend to remediate the ground, that, um, there would be no chance of offgassing or sick building syndrome, you know, uh, gassing, penetrating a slab. However, again, this is working with Maine DEP and EPA. You could potentially build a building there for human occupation, but you'd have to put vapor barrier and other types of things. There would be some added construction steps needed to make that safe. Again, this would all be in consultation with the state and with EPA. It's all possible. Are, is that, is a residential piece there the best use of that land? Maybe, maybe not. That's not for me to determine. But what we are doing in this moment, we want to get the structure down because nothing can happen until that occurs. We're going to put an asphalt parking lot, which achieves the immediate safety, mitigates the safety hazard, right, by that exposure barrier, but it also becomes a parking lot. Now, it's a blank canvas. You know, we can, we can work with the state, you can work with the state, you can work with EPA, and, you know, we don't see any barriers to, from on a technical side, to put pretty much anything there. There are costs with each one of those choices, right? You might have to do more if you're going to put a residential structure there versus a commercial structure. If you're going to put a sensitive population there, the young or the elderly, you might have to do more than other. So these are all things you'd work with, with the state. But it doesn't limit your choices in this moment. I think that's where you were.
And I want people, like, it's good to get the information now because this is like, we don't know what's going to come of this. We have to get this structure down. We have to make sure that Pioneer Avenue is shored up. This is a wonderful grant that we've received to, to accomplish this. It's, you know, step by step by step by step, that's what the mill yard is. And that's what it has, uh, we've been trained. You kind of work your steps and you eventually, hopefully, have a vibrant center down there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Just a follow-up question.
I know the intent is to turn this into a parking area. Is, is part of that plan any, like, electrical utilities or anything that's gonna be going through that, so we can put street lighting in and that kind of thing?
So, I'll be honest, this is something we have not specifically gone through with the city yet, through with Keith and the growth council, but, and, and obviously, you know, you all as well, but there is a bond that's above and beyond, a municipal bond that's above and beyond the $5 million grant. I, I, as a private citizen, don't get to make these choices, but I always contemplated that bond as being able to do some of that finish work that the grant was not able to pay for, because that's not a remediation, striping, lighting, you know, some of that type work. But that, that bond could be potentially used to do that, you're gonna need, you're gonna want that lighting in that space.
Yeah, I guess just, just more of my concern is, you know, as part of this capping process, have we thought about adding some of those in? Even if the city has to pay for it, just, just so we don't have to go back to the EPA and say, hey, we wanna disturb this?
No, no, it will all be done in, 100%, we, we, when, when this project is completely done, it's lit, it's striped, and, and we will work with others and, and make sure that that is, is done. We, we don't wanna just put down asphalt and walk away, because that's not actually, I mean, it's not. And again, I wanna commend the city here, very few municipalities have the foresight to have that bond, right? There are going to be things that, you know, have not, that are not eligible under the federal grant, and this might allow all that finish work to occur and really complete the project.
So we already have that bond? Okay, good. I hear a bunch of people who know what they're talking about, yeah.
Hope I'm not way out in front of my skis here, I'm pretty sure that was already approved by the voters.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing as they're, okay, anyone in favor? Anyone against? Seeing as there are none, I declare this hearing closed, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And it wasn't boring, it was very entertaining. All right, now, under old business, there's no consent agenda, so we'll move on. Under old business, in order to approve and discontinuous of a portion of the old Airport Road, Sanford, Maine, as discussed, and to instruct the city clerk to record a certificate of discontinuance with the York County Registry of Deeds and provide a copy to the Maine DOT. Can I have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved.
A second, Pete?
A second.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinances pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 1, 20 fees, Chapter 220, Transfer Station, Subsection 220-5A fees, Chapter 149, Subsection 6.8 vacant building fees, Article 3, Subsection 226-28 digging permits, Chapter 78, Article 8, Section 78-29 permit fees, and Article 2, Subsections 78-4 empowerment fees, and to a certain other municipal fees. This item must be read on two sep, second, separate occasions, this is the second reading, we just had that at the last meeting. So can I have, Maura?
I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule.
Thank you. Pete?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Just a comment that this is part of the budget that we approved.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Under new business, okay, these, the first three under new business is what we normally do every single year, so it'll be nothing new, some of the names are changed to protect the innocent. In order to, the first one is in order to appoint Jamie Cole, Alex Burbank, Aaron Ledger, Jeannie Wood, and Greg Melchi. Mulcahy. I, I will make it, I'll ruin it the next time, till Mulcahy, as the City of Sanford enforcement officers, and to appoint Jamie Cole as local plumbing inspector, and Alex Burbank, Aaron Ledger. Letterer? Oh. Well, he told me. Jamie Wood, and Gregory Mulcahy. Mulcahy. As alternate plumbing inspectors for the period beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. May I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to approve.
You don't wanna read the whole thing as part of your motion? Second, Jonathan?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve Aaron Ledger, Ledger. What's the other, there's another thing that does, I think there was a doctor in town that had their last name did the same thing like that, I could, I could never get it. Jamie Wood and Gregory. Mulcahy, Jamie, Jeannie Wood, and Gregory Mulcahy, as constables for the period beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2026. Be it further ordered that this appointment is empowered to enforce civil violations of the city code, including any amendments made or any emergency ordinances that are approved or adopted by the city council order, and is empowered to serve civil summons for violations of said city code. Be it further ordered that this appointment is not allowed to carry firearms concealed or unconcealed in the performance of duties or make arrests. May I have a motion, please? Nate?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, Pete?
Second.
All those in, oh, any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, you don't get to carry a firearm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd probably shoot myself, so I wouldn't wanna do that job. The next, in order to approve Ed Cormier as warden for June 10th, 2026, school budget validation referendum election at Ward 1, voting location, and.
It's a 2025.
2025, sorry, did I say 2026? I just wanted to get it done for next year too, 2025. Can I have a motion, please? Bob is the first.
So moved.
Pete is second.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Who else would wanna do that? In order to approve the bid by Charles A. Plant &amp; Sons to the amount of $11,700 for the demolition of 8 York Street as part of the land bake Danish, dangerous buildings process, and I bet all of York Street is listening and applauding right now. So could I have a motion, please? Oh, Michelle, do you need to talk about this?
Unless there's questions.
Any que, well, first, a motion? Pete?
Motion to proudly push this forward.
A second? Nate?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. In order to adopt a policy to not permit special events and airport use of outside normal aeronautical operations at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport pursuant to City Code, Chapter 7, Article 2, FAA Grant Assurances and deed restrictions until such time the airport manager develops and implement a special event permit. Allison? First, let me, let me get a motions, and then we can go. May I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
Motion to approve this updated process.
Second, Pete?
Second.
All right, Allison?
All right, if this sounds really familiar, it's because it's the exact same thing that we did a couple weeks ago, just, it's titled a little bit differently, so I'll explain. What, to zoom all the way back out again, so my job as the airport manager, I'm pretty much a liaison between the federal, state, and local government to make sure that all of our rules and policies always line up with all the other rules and policies, so that we stay safe, secure, and legal over there, and we don't get in trouble, we keep our grant funding coming in, and we keep all of our tenants safe as well. So, that being said, the laws and policies change from time to time, and we, when we talked about this before, we talked about it in the context of a moratorium. So when we talked to the city's legal counsel, they said that you actually don't need to do a moratorium, the moratorium tweaks the ordinance that you have to put a pause on something, and the way that Chapter 70, Article 2 is written, we don't need a moratorium, because it's written, and it says very specifically, the city has the authority to restrict the use of the property how they see fit. And then further on down the line, it names specifically special events, and lists, for example, concerts, fireworks. And then it talks about making the airport manager in charge of coming up with a written procedure to be able to have those things happen. So, prior to everything changing with FAA and them implementing this new policy, there wasn't any formal application at all. It was just, come in the office, we have a meeting, talk about safety, I kinda get everything all together. I would ask for permission from FAA, just usually through with a phone call and then a follow-up email. They would send an email saying, yep, we approve it with your safety plan, and you're good to go. So we did this with the CDL driving course, and a bunch of other different events that we've had over the years. So this has changed, and it's tightened down now, and it requires a lot more information. So when you look at those federal register notices, one of them talks about land use of the airport property in general, which I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, it has nothing to do with where the fence is, it's the entire property it applies to. And that's also part of the airport's deed. So, in like, December of 1947, the federal government deeded all that land to the city, and in that deed, it's like, Book 1,0119, page 306, or something like that, I've looked at it too many times. If you look up that, it says right in there, shall only be used as a public use airport and no other use permitted. So of course, since 1947, they kinda ebb and flow with how much they wanna enforce that, and we're in a hard enforcement time right now. So we're cleaning up everything and trying to make sure that we protect our grant funding, we protect everything that we have going on over there. So the new requirements need 120 days prior notice to meet with FAA, so that's the sponsors representative has to meet with FAA, and the sponsors, the city. So it's not the tenant, the tenant can't go do it themselves and say, hey, I wanna do this, I have to go do it. So, have to schedule that, and then 60 days out, you have to provide a written submission that has impact on aeronautical activities, the justification, which specifically says why off-airport locations are not viable. So basically, prove to us that you can't just do this somewhere else. So that's a checkmark that needs to be in it. Timing, a map, a communication plan, a safety plan, and then a financial plan. So the airport has to recover fair market value for non-aeronautical use. So that would be like a percentage of ticket sales, we also can't even put resources towards it and not be compensated for that. So the hours that staff put into it and all of that kind of stuff needs to be figured into this new application process, so that FAA can approve it. And then it also requires in there a binding written agreement that the applicant has to sign, saying they're gonna hold the airport harmless, and that they agree to pay these fees and do all this stuff. So I've started working on that, because this started happening, you know, more than a year ago, and the application is like already 13 pages, just to try to keep up with all of this stuff. So that's attached in your packet, the draft, so I'll keep refining that down, and that will also get circulated to codes, to fire, and police, so that they can sign off and say, does this require police detail, does this require an ambulance to be staged there? Are there any code occupancy requirements? Things like that, so that we, we check all the boxes locally and federally, so that everybody's good. There's a separate process for more, I guess, permanent type of changes of use, and that could be an interim. But it would require all these same things, plus probably a National Environmental Policy Act review, which is like federal DEP type of thing. So they're both very time involved. So what I'm asking for is the same thing as before, we're just not titling it a moratorium, because we don't need to do that process. But it's just, the attorney recommended that we do an official policy, just so that it's known and everything's above board, that until we get this new grant application in process, or in place, that we won't be allowing any events, just to keep everything on fair and level.
Okay, thank you, and I have two questions after we take a vote. So all those in favor? Question, go ahead.
Just so other people can hear, so this, this sounds like you're creating a special event permit process. I'd like to amend the language here, to just add the word process, I don't know if we need to vote on that, but I think that would just clarify it.
We would have to vote on that. Didn't we, isn't this done by the lawyer on the wording?
It is a permit that I'm writing, so that's that 13 page.
I mean, if everybody's fine with it, I just thought it might be a little clarification.
Right, so you okay with not doing that? Okay, Nate?
It's gonna end up being the same, so.
Hold on, Maura, Nate?
Sure, so first of all, I just wanna say, I remember the, some of the policies, you know, pre, because I was looking at some of the regulations you uploaded for us, and I think the first one I saw was, it was like effective summer of 2023, I think is what I saw, so it is fairly recent. I remember the Sanford Mariners did a 5K at the airport, I don't know how we were able to have people run around the airport with planes flying around, like, I was standing, standing in the middle of the field at the halfway point, seeing planes fly by, wondering how this is legal, but. But we made it, we made it, everyone was safe.
Now that's a lawyer saying that.
It was fun, it was, it was an unforgettable experience, standing out there in the, the sun. But anyway, some of the, and deep, and going to deeper into these regulations, I saw that a lot of the, the regulations part, which is what made me more, the most nervous, because regulations usually mean penalties or fines if you don't follow it, talks about how these are, these permits need special events for, that require closure of the airport. So I guess my question is, you know, because I, I couldn't really tell if there's any sort of specific hours of operation, or perhaps if the airport is considered technically speaking 24/7, because we have lifeflight with us, or other reasons like that. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear that the, if you can speak to that, Allison, about, you know, what, I guess, are technically are hours of operation that make these regulations apply?
Yep, so the airport is 24/7, so it's a piece of the transportation infrastructure, the same as Route 109, so anybody who has an airplane can use it anytime. And it applies to all of the airport property. When it's talking about temporary closure, that's more for, if you're trying to do a drag race, and you wanna shut down a taxiway or something like that, which is a legitimate request that we've gotten. And so, when I talked to FAA, I tried to see if that was some kind of point of clarification, and they responded back and said, no, it's the whole, the whole property for any of those kind of events. So I'll give an example of something that's happened at Sanford that, where it kinda spills over, even though the, the concerts that Pilots Cove was having were outside the fence. I have pilots now saying that if they know that's happening, they park their plane somewhere else. So that's definitely, now it's spilled over, the impact, the impression that it gives, all of that is that it's, it's just not really compatible with aviation, and then you go back to, can you do it somewhere else? So it has no net benefit to civil aviation, in fact, it's a detriment, because now pilots are afraid of trusting leaving their airplane next to that, for whatever reason. So, there's that, that whole part of it. But FAA did clarify that, that, because I thought maybe that could be some leeway for us of inside and outside the fence, but the shooting range also is outside the fence, doesn't matter, it's not compatible use.
And so that provision that talks about, can it be done anywhere else other than the airport, is that a regulation? Is that a, because there's, there's regulations, policies, and then there's grant assurances, like, what, do you, can you tell us what part that particular part plays in?
Yep, so, the point with that is, the policy is a directive that tells FAA how they're gonna enforce the regulation. So in our case, we not only have the conveyance during, through the deed, that's in perpetuity, that you have to use it for aviation purposes only, that's forever on the whole property, then every time we've taken federal grant money, which is the letter that the secretary sent out that's attached to your packet also, every time we do that, we're restarting the clock, because we've received that money to follow all those rules. So those are the grant assurances. 19, for instance, is operation and maintenance and safety. So they point back to that one and, and tie it to that. And then the definition is of whether you can do it somewhere else or not, that's how you know if it's aeronautical or non-aeronautical. So if it has to be done on the airport, by nature, it's an aeronautical use, because the airport's for that purpose. If you can do it somewhere else, then they consider it non-aeronautical. So even if you were gonna build like a building to manufacture airplanes, that's non-aeronautical, it's manufacturing, you could do it somewhere else. You don't need the airport right there, so you'd have to make a case to be able to use the. And the other thing I'll say too, is that this isn't by any means forever, to say that we can't have any events, it's just to put a, a process. we can't have any events, it's just to put a, a process in place, so that it makes my job go more smoothly, it makes it go more smoothly when we request to FAA, so that if, um, any of the stuff that has happened in the past, absolutely free to apply, um, and then we'll see what FAA says, and then you'll have concrete justification at that point. But in the time being, um, I need to really focus on this and make sure that we have that permit in place, so that that application is fair to everybody, because I get all sorts of kind of harebrained requests of stuff to do, because there's big open spaces and lots of pavement over there.
Like a five K in the middle of an airport?
Yeah, and no joke, like, that's a great example of not being able to foresee things that could happen. There was a legally blind person who entered the race and missed the flags and just like kept going, and we had spotters like at all the turns, but we were sitting there like, how could you ever even foresee? We had spotters to make sure, but you would never just even imagine that that would happen. Or like someone decides to run it barefoot, and it's very unforgiving ground out there, and it's like bloody feet afterwards, but thank goodness they signed a waiver. So it's certain things, you just don't, events are kind of a, it's a wild card every time, so having a good, solid policy in place where it protects the city, it makes sure that, um, we're going to keep our grant funding, and we're not going to get fined or any kind of penalties, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
In reality, the FAA used to be a lot more fun when they let us fly airplanes over the pond.
And the pumpkin drop, yeah.
Pumpkin, I love the pumpkin drop.
I know, that's FAA, put that to a halt.
Uh, probably wisely. When it landed next to the guy in the lawn chair, I think that was probably a good idea to stop that. The, uh, I was gonna make once, the two statements after, one of them I think pertains to this. Um, I noticed that Dan is now going to do his concert at Memorial Gym, so then that's, fits the thing that says, could it be done off? And that, that would be. I also think that's a wise decision of his to do it off, because if it rains, he can still do it, and that facility holds more people than what he could hold at the airport. So he could essentially sell more tickets and have more people viewing the concert, so he could even have bigger concerts, and I know he likes to promote concerts, so this could be a whole nother career for him, and plus it does help out Memorial Gym, too, so I think that that was a good move. Um, the second thing I wanted to ask about, which probably doesn't fit in here, um, is the fire station that's down there, because people keep saying, why aren't we using that fire station? Why can't we just keep that? And if I'm, get me if I'm wrong, but isn't the FAA saying, we've already had that long enough, it shouldn't be there, we need to tear it down?
Yep, so that's a perfect example of the land use, so we have an interim, um, non-aeronautical use permission for five years. So this is the second five-year that we've gotten on it, so I don't know if they're going to extend it one more time, and I think it expires either in June or September of this year. So we'll go through that process again, and it may be that it has to be reverted back to the airport even sooner, so we'll see what the deal is with that.
Okay, and hopefully they'll extend that, knowing that we are building a fire station.
Right, because we would only need to ask for two or three more years this time, and we could show that the bond went through the vote, and all of the applications being made, and all that kind of stuff. So I'm hoping they would, can give us, uh, some leeway on that until, so we've been making a concerted effort in that way. Yep. The other one I would suggest, too, is that we did the Brew Festival very successfully for Sanford's two-fiftieth in Goodall Park, that would be a heck of a concert venue.
Yeah.
So, and you have the concession right there, so, and you're right, he's very good at it, he's found a niche, um, it's just, there's a better spot to do it that could be more successful.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you. Jonathan?
One last question. Um, do you have a rough timeframe on when you think you might have that process done?
I'm hoping by the end of the year, once the construction season's gone by, because we have so much construction going on in the airport right now, I should be able to carve out some time to catch up on things like this.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, I think you're the next one, too. In order to authorize and direct the city manager to enter into the specific credit enhancement agreement with the owners of J. and J. Whitney Properties LLC property in substantially the form as presented to the city council and consistent with the terms of the development property. Hopefully I got that all right.
Had to do it twice tonight.
So, can I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
I'll motion to move forward with, uh, authorizing the city manager to move forward with this process.
That's what I would have said, too. A second.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
And in order to approve early use of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CIP funding by the Sanford Police Department to purchase four police cruisers, Chief Small.
Hello again. Um, this year's budget, in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, you did approve the purchase of four police vehicles for patrol use. Uh, the city manager and I met, and we are concerned that, uh, we will not be able to acquire these four vehicles if we don't just put a hold on them right now, they're down at the dealership, we've confirmed they're available, um, and that's related to the tariffs, and the possibility that there's going to be a really large demand, and a lot of people trying to get the vehicles. So we're asking to use our CIP funds that have already been approved, forty-five days early, I guess, um, just so we can get them up here, and they'll be in our parking lot until after July one, and then we'll be able to move forward to getting them outfitted.
All right.
And in the packet, I did put the price of the vehicles, it's going to be in that range, um, that was the quote they gave us.
Thank you. And it sounds like it's very needed to hurry up and do this, or we're going to lose them.
It is, and for the last, this will be the fourth year we've bought from the governed, uh, municipal headquarters down in Massachusetts. They have about anywhere from four to five hundred vehicles on-site versus, um, like during COVID, this all started because we couldn't get any police vehicles. So now we can turn around police vehicles pretty immediately, and we usually buy a, um, get a, you know, a past year's model. This year, actually, we are acquiring some twenty twenty-five models for, uh, the same prices we did last year, so, which is actually really good.
Excellent. Any questions? Can I have a motion, please? Pete?
Uh, I motion to approve early use of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six CIP funding for the Sanford Police Department for four cruisers. How's that now to me?
That was excellent. Jonathan, the second?
And I'll second that.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any comments from council members? And future agenda items? And Nate, didn't you have something you want on a subcommittee?
Yes, so, um, there's been some discussion, um, in the, in emails back and forth about potentially either purchasing or coming up with an idea for temporary speed bumps on Robert Street during the summer, uh, use of, you know, both Goodall Park and, and, um, the park across the street from it, just to facilitate safety, you know, as someone who's worked in, in Goodall the past few summers, there are some drivers who, who drive by relatively quickly, and even more concerning is that when, um, baseballs leave the park, uh, foul balls, you can tell kids who are blue in the face to not run after them, but they, it's, it's gold, so they run after them, and so we're just, you know, that, we've, we've all been lucky that nothing's happened yet, so, um, there's been some discussion about, uh, potentially getting, uh, some temporary speed bumps in place, but it would require some purchase, so I, that's something I, I'd send an email out to ask to put that on a subcommittee, I don't know which one, its property or public safety, because it deals with kind of both, but...
I would say Little League would be just, I mean, Little League is packed, and the Mainers are packed, for the first few weeks, it's, it's craziness down there.
Yeah, so it, it, and it's temporary, because I don't think you necessarily need it there, you know, for the entire time, you can if you want, but, you know, at least for that, those, you know, basically baseball seasons, it might make sense to have something there for, as an added safety precaution.
And when does that season start?
So, the Mainers at least, I know, will start June sixth.
In reality, I wish we could put the traffic around, like, block the street, and people could go around, it'd be, actually work even better. Go ahead.
But we won't be able to have our subcommittee meeting until after that.
So, yeah, so there, there's been some discussions via email back and forth, so I, I imagine this probably wouldn't happen for this season, but perhaps if there's a different method of whether, you know, maybe that, that goes to subcommittee, but something else, perhaps, you know, at least signs or something like that, may, may be effective for now, while we come up with a better plan.
And do we need to have that as part of our agenda? Were signs, just signs or something?
That might just be a question.
I think you can just do it with Matt.
Yeah, I think that's, that could just be something that's done, but, you know, the, the speed bumps would definitely need to be on the agenda, because there's a monetary factor to it.
So we'll put that on the subcommittees in June.
Okay.
We could probably sign it, but, I mean, we, I think as we, we discuss the speed bumps, there's, there's some merit to, to having a conversation that, at a certain point, as the game starts, the street closes, and people have to go around the block. There's some merit to that, because I...
Other places do it.
It's so, oh my God, watching some of these cars speed down the hill, and you have children all over the place, from the Little League to the, the Mainers Ball Field, and I don't even know why people don't think about that. And the streets narrowed up because of the parking.
Yep, that's true.
So a minimum, it should be one-way during, during that, minimum, if not blocking.
Well, blocking, it would probably be safer. Jonathan?
Yeah, I, I live down that way, so I end up having to drive through there all the time when there's games. Um, I find, and probably you guys are seeing something different, it sounds like, but, um, I find once it starts getting clogged up in there, people slow way down, so it's pretty, pretty slow through there. I would be opposed to speed bumps, um, I'd be okay with signs, I know we do have some of those flashy signs, like, coming down the hill from Lebanon, something like that would be nice, but we could talk about it.
So in June, we'll...
In the meantime, I would encourage everybody to go be there for at least the first five innings of a Mainers game and watch the traffic, when it's crowded and busy and people still speed.
Let me tell you what happened at Carpenter Park the other day. Packed, because there were two games going on, uh, actually, three games, people were in the park itself, playing on the playground, there were people playing pickleball, so all the courts were full. There was a car that, I didn't realize that it started at Steve's house, on Grammar Street or Road, which I can never remember which, where, he heard it coming around the corner of the street above him, came down, was, he said by the time it went just past his house, he said it had to have been going a hundred miles an hour. It came all the way down by Carpenter Park, and went around the corner, and I couldn't